Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome me to the Kingsburg City Council Meeting. The council chamber is open to the public at a hundred percent capacity. Today's Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is about two minutes after six. Invitation to be given by Pastor Ricky Chambers of the Kingsburg Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for having me. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new day and that your mercers are new each day. We thank you for this time to gather here. We just pray over this time that it would bring you glory, that you'd be moving and working in the city and moving powerfully. So, Father, I lift up each council member to you and our mayor, we thank you for them, strengthen them, give them your discernment to lead wisely. Thank you for our police department, Lord, and our hearts go out to the Selma Police Department as well tonight and the family of Officer Carrasco, Lord. Provide for them, bring them comfort, and we pray for protection for all officers who put their lives on the line every day. We lift up our fire department, our city employees and our manager. We pray that you'll provide for their every need, strengthen them for their high calling. So, Father, we ask your blessing over this time, over the agenda, the decisions that are made here today. Thank you for the work that continues to go on in this city and the improvements that are happening here. Thank you for your faithfulness, for the leaders you've provided us with. Teach us to walk in step with you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please, Abby? Here. Next, we will approve the agenda. Action by council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda are constrained by state law. Can I get a motion to approve? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Tonight, we have no presentations. Next, we have public comments. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to speak on public comment? Doesn't look like it. Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. Next, we have consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recital reading ordinances by titles only and adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have five point one through five point twelve. Do we have any council members that would like to pull any items out of consent calendar? No? Anybody from the public like to pull an item from consent calendar? No? Okay. Then I need a motion to approve consent calendar. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that is approved. Next, we'll go to regular calendar, six point one. State and federal legislative platform discussion with Townsend Public Affairs. Staff report by City Manager Alex Henderson, presentation by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item continues our original discussion from our last meeting on January eighteenth. During that time, the legislative, both the state and legislative, state and federal legislative platform was introduced, focusing on a number of topics which are included for your review. During the July or the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, council asked for water resiliency as well as recharge efforts to be added to the platform. Those changes, along with a specific call out to support measures aimed at repairing and revitalizing local streets and roads, have been included for review this evening. Those three items are highlighted to show the differences between this draft versus the original draft. So, Andres Ramirez from TPA is again available with us this evening on Zoom. Happy to answer any questions, but our recommendation is that if there are not any other additions to this, that the council approve the state and federal legislative platform as presented this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any members have questions or comments on six point two? Excuse me, six point one?
I like the additions.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you brought that up at our last meeting, which was... That was a good call there, Laura. Any other discussion? Nope. Anybody from the public like to comment on six point one? No? Okay. No more council discussion, then we'll... Action deemed necessary is... Can I get a motion? Yeah, to accept, to get a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Okay, got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Andres.
Six point two, acceptance of Bethel Avenue and Sierra Street Roundabout. Prepared by City Engineer Dave Peters, presentation by City Engineer Dave Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So, before I ask for action on this item, just wanted to give you a little review of the journey that we went on with this project. It's our Bethel and Sierra Roundabout project. As you know, it's located on the extreme west side of our city at Bethel and Canejo Sierra. It was an existing four-way stop that was recently converted to a roundabout. The timeline on the project, we actually got the grant back in two thousand and sixteen, so these are federal funds, as you know, we talked about before. It takes a long time to get through the process. We had to wait a couple of years for the money to get programmed. Then we went into our preliminary design phase, right away in utility coordination. The environmental document was approved in late two thousand and twenty. Then we moved into final design. We had to acquire several parcels of land in three corners to complete the construction, and we relocated several utilities, poles and a vault. In March of twenty of last year, we, the construction phase was authorized by FHWA. Immediately went out to bid and just finished construction recently, so... It was a, took a while to get it done. This is just an excerpt of one of our, one of our design plans. A little before and after photos. Photo on the left was the four-way stop. This intersection, the reason that we got the funding was the intersection had a history of accidents that was, that were not mitigated by the four-way stop. We continued to see the accidents. And the, the roundabout was identified as a, as a countermeasure that would correct the, correct the accident problem. So, again, on the left, the four-way stop on the right, that's what you see today. This is looking from northerly along Bethel. Again, left would look like the fore and, and what it looks like today. This is our center island treatment that the council selected. This is how it came out. Lots of input from, from staff members on, on that decal, so, but I think we, at the end, in the end, I think we got it right. And it's on both sides, on both the east and the west side of the, of the tank. The funding, as I mentioned, federal funds, a majority of the funds came from the Highway Safety Improvement Program. The remaining funds came from the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program. And I just wanted to highlight the project team, Don Berry Construction, one of our local contractors who does a lot of city projects. They, they were the construction contractor and they did an excellent job in, in building the, the roundabout. And then the city also engaged CPSI out of Orange County, and they negotiated and acquired all the right of ways, so did a really good job, so. With that, I'd like to ask the council to accept the project and authorize the city engineer to file the notice of completion. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? The roundabout?
I just want to confirm, it's not so much about the approval, I think we're going to approve it, but how many city dollars were actually spent on this roundabout? This is a question I get a lot, and I believe it's...
It was a hundred percent funded with federal funds.
So, out of city dollars, not one dollar was spent for this roundabout?
Nope, it was all...
That's an important thing I can ask that I can be all answered.
Not, yeah, it was all, it was all a hundred percent funded by the, the federal FHWA funds.
Next question, maybe not for you, maybe for Chief or Lieutenant Penley. The other concern that a lot of people had was how many accidents this is going to cause? Can you guys speak to how many serious accidents we've had at the roundabout?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any, but I am aware of many accidents at that intersection, including fadals.
Now, that's one of the things that a lot of people think that the roundabout is going to cause accidents, it's going to cause problems, and it's a waste of city dollars, which I think that's, that's the whole point of this. It didn't cost anything. So far, we haven't had any accidents, knock on wood. It may happen someday, but I think statistically speaking, it reduces accidents, which is another reason why the highway safety was giving us the money.
Yeah.
I just want to put that out there to the public, so that's a question that we're all getting asked quite a bit.
Yeah, and what's really important, too, is if, if there are accidents, there are slow speed side swipes, and so you basically just have property damage.
Any other questions for Dave?
I think the other two concerns that I heard was, are there any issues or complaints that we've had about semi trucks going through there? Or anybody like driving over the middle part of it?
No, there, I have actually observed myself, and I, I think I have a drone photo of a truck going through it, I can send you. But, yeah, no, the trucks can make it through there just fine. If you look at the center island, the, the, the red concrete around the cobble area, that's actually designed as a truck ramp. So, it's reinforced concrete and it's designed to, for the back wheels of, of larger trucks to be able to mount that and get around there. So, it's designed that way. But, yeah, I think they're getting through there just fine.
I just have a comment. I know that when we first approved this, I got a lot of pushback from citizens, but once, you know, once they found out that it wasn't costing the city any money, I told them, yeah, it's a hundred percent funded, you know. There was, you know, some were like, oh, that's good to hear, you know, and some were still against it, you know, like Brandon was saying, they think that people don't know how to use a roundabout, and they were afraid that they're going to, you know, have more little side swipe. And that's what I told them. I said, well, if there is, at least they're low impact, you know, so.
Well, the other benefit, too, is the capacity of the intersection's been increased significantly, so as development occurs, you know, we could probably take advantage of that extra.
I've actually had a couple of people come and tell me, oh, I really like that. I like the way it looks and, like, I like going through it. It's fun. Well, okay, it's fun.
I also have seen, a lot of the comments are online about the roundabout, and Don Berry really did an excellent job at managing that and educating people.
Yeah.
So, not only a beautiful project, but educating the public, they did a really good job.
Yeah, they're a great partner. We really enjoy working with them.
Okay, any comments from the public on this roundabout? No? Okay. Then we can go to the action deemed necessary, which is to accept, yeah, accept the completion. Okay, got a motion, second, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Dave. Might as well stay up there, Dave. Six point three. Approval of two thousand and twenty-three improvement standards. Staff report by City Engineer Dave Peters, presentation by City Engineer Dave Peters.
Can you make it, can you make it whole screen? That'll work, that'll work. We'll just, we'll just, we'll do it like that. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, starting last year, we, we embarked upon doing an update to our improvement standards. Last time they were updated was two thousand and nine, so it's been some time. Had a, some different, different design standards come along the way, and, and also there's, things have changed in the industry that require that they be updated. So, I won't go through everything that we did, because it's, there's a lot of it, but I will kind of highlight some of the, some of the more significant things. This is just an excerpt out of our North Kingsburg specific plan, and that plan introduced a couple of new street sections that we're now starting to use as we, as we see development occur in that area. And even in the Hash area, we, we adopted those same standards, so an example of that is north of, north of Cam, Eighteenth Avenue was a hundred and sixteen foot right of way. It's a, it's a major arterial, so we did not have a standard for that street section in our improvement standard, so we added those. Both a hundred and six foot street section as well as the, the hundred and sixteen foot. So, these, these are, are four-lane arterials with, with, with raised median, so that's something that we haven't typically constructed in Kingsburg, but we're, but we're constructing them now, so we've added those to the standards. Another thing that, that the, that that North Kingsburg specific plan changed that we've been implementing but wasn't necessarily incorporated into our standards was our residential, our street section. So, our old section was forty feet curb to curb, so you can see that there's forty feet from the face of curb on one side to the face of curb on the other side, eight-foot shoulders and two twelve-foot travel lanes. In, in, in the newer developed areas, that's actually shrunk down to thirty-six feet. So, we've taken a couple of feet out of the parking area and moved that over and added that into, into the parkway area, so slightly narrower streets. And that's, that standard's been implemented and construct, constructed not only in, in the Hash subdivision, but also for all the subdivisions north of Cam, the, the newer ones that are being constructed. So, those are, those are now incorporated and in part of our standards. We made some minor adjustments to some existing standards, like for instance, on street, street names. We, we've added a requirement that they be mounted at intersections on street poles, so instead of having our streetlights, so instead of having a street light and a separate pole for the, so that, for the street name signs, we're incorporating them and, and putting them all in one pole just to kind of clean things up, so it's not so cluttered. We've been doing this for a while, but we, we've now formally adopted into our standards the sidewalk wrapping around the back of the residential drive approaches. You'll see that in a lot of the newer areas of town, and now, now it's incorporated as part of our standard. We, we had a lot of, we've done a lot of outreach on our Eighteenth Avenue sidewalk projects, which I hope we're, we're getting close to be able to go to construction on that job, but there were some residents that were not aware of that change, that the sidewalk actually wraps around the back of, of the drive approaches. We've got fourteen different types of curb ramps in our standards. All need to comply with the latest American with Disability Act requirements, and so we've updated all of those ramp, ramps, so that they, they comply with the latest standards, and those standards are kind of a moving target. They always seem to change. The truncated domes seem to get bigger and smaller. The scoring behind the ramp changes, goes away, comes back, so it's kind of a, like I said, it's kind of a moving target, but we've updated them all to, to meet the most recent standards. We've added a requirement on the storm drain basin that they're screened with either slatted slots in the, in the chain link fencing, or we've actually allowed an option for that to be screened with landscaping now. So, that's most, mostly what contractors are opting to do is, is to screen the exterior of the basins with landscaping. We just don't want people to be able to drive by, see through a chain link fence and see a, a dirt hole in the ground. We want that screened. So, it's visually appealing. One of the things that I just thought I would point out, we get a lot of questions on this, lot grading and subdivisions. So, the, the, the side yards and the front yards of, of the, of, of the individual residential lots drain towards the street, and the backyards drain toward the alleys, and something that people don't always realize is, is the street and the alleys aren't always at the same elevation. Sometimes they're higher or lower. So, if the, so if the, if the alley is higher than the street, you can see we need to comply with this one percent minimum, which puts, pushes the pad higher than the alley, but if the alley's higher, already higher than the street, you'll get like some, some steeper slopes in the front. So, we get asked that, so how come the driveway in the front of the house is, is so steep? And it's just, it's just a, a, a result of, of the grades of the alleys and the streets. We've added a provision for three bin trash enclosures, so that we can stick that third bin in there and comply with the latest requirements for organic waste disposal. We've been requiring this, but now we've formally incorporated into our standard. We, we actually will require on newer paved streets, if they, we try to prevent any of our new streets from getting cut into at all, but if, if, if it has to happen, we're now requiring that, that the trenches not only be patched, but they be slurry sealed, and they be heater planned. So, a heater plan is like a giant iron, and it'll go on the pavement, and it'll basically just iron everything totally smooth, so you don't get a bump or, or, or a rough, a rough box, a spot in the patch. I mean, if the road is really, is in really bad shape, we won't require them to do that, but in the newer roads, to, to maintain the integrity of the roads, we've added that, that provision. All of our street lights are not on our LED. Again, we've been requiring that for the last few years, but now it's formally incorporated in part of our standard, and this, it, street light is, is our standard that we've adopted for all residential subdivisions. All the residential subdivisions will have this particular light. This is the light that you see over in the Hash subdivision, so that one seems to be the, the one that, that's been helping, holding up the best in terms of maintenance and those sorts of things, so we've adopted as a standard. We've also added a new layout for those ornamental lights, and what you'll notice is in the subdivisions that have those ornamental type lights, they're closer together than standard street lights, just because the, the wattages are, are a little smaller and, and the lights are shorter, so you don't get quite as much light coverage, so we have, so the lights are more frequent. So, if you see, if you think, hey, the lights are a lot closer together than, than in the older subdivisions where the, where they had the, the old typical street lights, that's why. We, we've also incorporated a standard, we'll, we'll be looking at installing traffic signal standards for the lighting in the corners of our arterial, arterial intersections, so that they're easily convertible to a traffic signal when that's, when that's necessary. So, we won't have to try to take those poles out later. They're already set up for that. We've added a, an option for a residential water service to include a one and a quarter inch service. The standard service is one inch, but what fire has noticed is due to the, the recent requirements to have all residential homes sprinkled, they need a little bit more water volume, particularly in areas that have lower pressures, to make all the calculations work on the, on the sprinkler system, so we've added that. They've also requested, and we've made the change, to change the type of fire hydrant, so forever the fire hydrant was a, was a Mueller fire hydrant, it's the old shorter silver ones, and so now you'll see the, the cloud hydrants being installed. They're a little taller. So, if you see that difference, that was, that was a request by the fire department to make that change. We've adopted a new standard for an exterior fire riser. We've had several buildings in the downtown area be developed and, and have these installed, so we just wanted to standardize that for the fire department. And then lastly, we've added a standard to, on, on new subdivisions to add an address marker on the rear fence in the alley. So, when you're in the alley, you know what, what house you're at. So, I, that's, I think that's going to help our public works guys a lot and, and probably our, our emergency responders, so. That's, that's the highlights. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? This item? I just have one question. You said about the three bin installation?
Yeah.
And that goes?
Yeah, so typically, we would require, like, businesses to install a two bin trash enclosure, one for trash and one for recycling. Now, that requirement is you have to have one for trash, one for recycling, and one for organics. So, we just added that, that third bin.
Yeah, it's just for businesses, because residents, it's...
No, it's not, not for homes. No, that's just for, that's for commercial uses, yeah.
They can put their organics in the green waste.
Yeah, 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 you don't have to have a trash enclosure for, for homes, yeah, just for commercial.
Okay, for commercial, yeah. Any questions from the public on this item? Nope? Okay, then, we're good. We need to adopt this resolution. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll motion that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda, Dave again, award the police facility tenant improvements. Staff report by City Engineer Dave Peters, presentation by City Engineer Dave Peters.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. So, last year, we began design of, of improvements to the fire department, or excuse me, the police department building. The improvements included, you know, things like adding a wall to separate the training room from the kitchen, modification of the, of the armory, taking out a couple of saunas that weren't being used and repurposing those, those spaces for, for different uses, reconfiguring some offices to get a little bit more office space. We worked hand in hand with, with our chief doing this, brought on an architect to prepare the design. Late last year, we went out to bid with the improvements. On January twenty-fourth, we received four bids from contractors ranging from three hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. The low bid was from BMY Construction. We've, we've, you know, evaluated them, and, and they are, they have the appropriate licenses, and they're in good standing with the Contractor State License Board. The bid included a fifty thousand dollar contingency for things that, that may crop up during construction, so particularly in, you know, building remodels, those sorts of things are, are typical to have little things come up. But we do have some contingency in the bid. So, the original funding was for three hundred and fifty thousand. We've already spent about thirty-seven thousand dollars in design and bidding the job. So, that puts us over the, the three forty-one nine fifty plus what we've already spent, puts us over the original amount budgeted. So, staff is recommending that the council authorize the utilization of an additional fifty thousand dollars in Measure E funds should, should those funds be needed. So, if everything goes smooth and perfect, and we don't need the, to use the fifty thousand dollar contingency that's in the bid, we wouldn't need those additional funds, but if they are needed, we wanted them to be available. So, with that, we're recommending the, the council award the police facility tenant improvements to BMY Construction in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and staff is also recommending that council authorize the use of an additional fifty thousand dollars in Measure E funds if necessary. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
I have a question, sure. I have a question, Mr. Peters. I got a chance to tour the, the project with Chief Dadian, and, and a lot of the stuff that you guys are doing makes a lot of sense. The fifty thousand dollar portion, do you feel that that will cover everything, all the ancillary items that could potentially come up? Or is there a possibility that the fifty thousand wouldn't be enough?
That's what we, that's what we believe would be a sufficient contingency to cover what may come up during, during construction, but, you know, sometimes you're way under that, and sometimes you're a little over that, you know, so it's, I mean, it's... You know, so it's I mean, it's a little bit of uh looking in the future, not really knowing what what unknowns we're going to uh, you know, because if you get into the you know, if you get into it and you find, you know, dry rot in the framing or something like that that nobody knew about, I mean, that could, you know, that could really throw a monkey wrench in things. But if if the normal amount of unknowns occur, we we believe that's that's sufficient to cover it.
Fair enough.
Do you have timelines?
Yeah, so uh, so if it's awarded tonight, we'll immediately uh contact a contractor and have a pre-construction meeting. Um, and anticipate getting into construction in the middle of March. And then uh uh with the timeline that's provided in the contract, we expect to be done by uh fourth of July.
Twenty-three?
Of twenty-three, yes. Yeah, yeah, it's like it's a it's a it's like a four, it's like a four month uh, it's like a four month construction period. Yeah.
I mean, I'm gonna support that, but I just wanna make sure. Are are we gonna have the ability to have somewhere that the public can go during that time if they need to make contact with police officer or something during those four months? Chief, is there a plan for you guys with that?
Yes, sir. The the lobby is not gonna be affected by this. We're gonna have to do some uh maneuvering inside, you know, depending on what side of the building they're working on. But I think we have a pretty good plan for that, but there won't be any public disruption. That that operation will continue as is.
And just in case people are looking, listening online, couldn't hear that.
Right.
Chief's just confirming that during this, it's still gonna be the same business as usual for the public. It's gonna be more internal stuff.
Yeah, and we've uh, we've got provisions in the contract to you for uh for staging the the construction work such that they can still function as a department, so.
Uh, quick question. Um, has B M Y Construction done any other work for us in town?
They have not. We don't, I mean, we don't typically hire building contractors because we're not really modifying our buildings that often, but uh but we've looked into them. They have, they have a good reputation. They've done Yeah, they've done very, they've done a lot of similar work.
Any other questions? No comments? Uh, questions from the public on this one? No? Okay. Then we need to two motions here. The first one would be to award award at two B M Y Construction. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second motion is to is for the additional, the fifty thousand dollars for the additional that could come up.
Same motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, Dave. Motion carries. Okay, here we are. Council reports and staff communications.
One before that.
Seven point one, community service commission.
One before that, Vince.
Oh, my bad. Sorry about that, chief.
That's all right.
Oh, yeah, I checked off six point five already.
I'm good.
Because we're talking about police stuff already.
Yeah. Okay, my uh, six point five, crime statistics report for the month of January twenty twenty-three and general police department update. Crimes by our ch- police chief Neil Dadian.
Thank you, Mayor Palomar, and good evening to you and members of the council. Um, just one kind of format or housekeeping thing. So you you'll see some like charts with nothing on there. Corey forgot to hit a button and I didn't catch it till it was already uh sent to Abigail and published. So apologies for that. Well, maybe we'll have a little graph next time. So excuse the uh the faux pas on that. But uh relatively speaking, our crime is pretty much the same as it was in December. The, you know, I did the comparison on the numbers and, you know, we're we're always pretty much where we're at um one month to the next. Uh, we were dealing with some organized deaths, shoplifting, thefts for thefts from vehicles. And they've all remained about the same from December. We've had two commercial burglaries and two vehicle burglaries in January. Five uh stolen vehicles, five attempted stolen vehicles. And that's a little bit of an increase. Usually we run one or two, so five's a little bit more of a significant increase for us. Chevy Suburbians, Chevy Tahos and Chevy Silverado pickups are what they're trying to get after. Uh, we've had two of two Suburbians, two Taho's and one Silverado pickup um in in that group of ten. Three catalytic converter deaths and one attempted deaths uh in the month of January. Uh, so detectives are currently prioritizing investigations of sexual assault that they're currently working, stolen vehicles and the commercial burglaries. Uh, and then of course, uh, the vehicle collision fatal that um from last month, we're also continuing to work. Interesting um item that I wanted to bring your attention. So as you know, the Kingsburg Police Department uh participates in the magic uh anti-gang task force. Uh, we received information or Magic received information from the FBI about a kidnapping and abduction. Um, I'm sorry. A kidnapping or an abduction and a domestic violence and possibly human trafficking that started in Fresno County and and actually ended in Madera County. They turned that over to Magic involved a gang member. Uh, there was originally thought that the victims were from Kingsburg or that it was occurring in Kingsburg. It actually turned out to be Sanger, but Magic immediately signed it to our officer who's assigned to that task force. He began to work it and the end result was that we uh rescued the gang member's ex-wife, her daughter. She'd been held, both of them had been held for two days. She'd been brutalized pretty good over that two day period. And then uh he was arrested and it ended, it started in Fresno County and in Madera County. So um that's again, just any time I showcase the value of Magic and that team effort by Fresno County law enforcement, I like to do that because it was a federal and local partnership that brought that all together. Um, and then uh something recently developed as in today, I uh Lieutenant Pendley, I'm gonna invite him up to just fill you in on something uh recently and some drug situation that we've had.
Yeah, uh, uh Fresno County Narcotics have been working a case in uh on the west side of Kingsburg involving um uh methamphetamine. And they worked a worked about a week long uh case and made a significant arrest of a of a person that was dealing methamphetamine and recovered a sizable amount of methamphetamine. Uh, this took place yesterday.
We don't have weight or anything like that. Um, but as that comes in, I'll I'll be happy to share that with you um with the council next month. So but just looking at the pictures, it was a chunk of dope. Big chunk of dope. Um, our vacancy report update on that, still one police sergeant vacancy. I do plan on filling that shortly. Um, two police officer resignations pending, going back uh or going to other agencies. And I do have one police uh recruit in the academy. And the recruitment continues to be our biggest challenge, but we're doing our best. We're gonna do a recruiting effort at the academy at Hanford, the College of Sequoias. Uh, has a Tolet Kings Basic Academy there. So we'll be doing a recruitment on that at that location. Um, body worn camera grant had was submitted earlier this week, so hopeful on that. Um, we received a ten thousand dollar allocation from the Bureau of State and Community Corrections, B S C C, for officer wellness. Now, this was legislation that was enacted in uh tw- early twenty twenty-two m- mandating wellness for officers, especially in traumatic situations like officer involved shootings, things of that nature. Um, every law enforcement agency got an allotment. Ours was ten thousand. I've had a uh work group at uh the police department working on that for a few months, trying to put something together. There's a lot of options out there. But I'm looking for a three hundred and sixty degree wellness plan for sworn professional staff, volunteers, family members. Um, and so I hope to have one selected in the next few weeks and then we'll move forward with that. There'll be some training involved. And you know, there's, I mean, all kinds of really interesting things that come on your phone. I mean, it's an app and more things than I would have thought. So, you know, ways to track health issues, eating, you know, uh, all kinds of stuff and, you know, kind of a one size or one cost for all. Because, you know, we wanna include our family members because they're part of the wellness team for the officers and the professional staff. So I'm excited about that and uh we'll give you the details when we decide on who we're gonna go with. Uh, our training plan continues, new sergeants in training, new lieutenants in their various schools. And of course, assignment specific training and de-escalation training, which we've just had people at the last couple of weeks. Uh, heard about the police station remodel and looking forward to a hectic five months or so coming up. But glad it's on its way. Um, I do wanna let you know how this community stepped up for um Officer Carrasco. So the Kingsburg Police Officers Association sponsored cookies for cop for a cop at Bella Bakery uh this past weekend and uh Kingsburg Fire Department, uh there's um employee association stepped up and did something similar at Starbucks. That one at Starbucks from the fire department got almost thirty three hundred dollars, just short of thirty three hundred dollars. And uh the cookies for a cop at Bella Bakery pulled in seven thousand dollars. One car club just dropped a thousand dollars on us. So that's uh ten thousand dollars coming out of this community, which is pretty significant contribution. And the support um is felt and appreciated, and I wanted the council to know that. Uh, wrapping that up, the funeral services for Officer Gonzalo Carrasco Junior will be tomorrow at ten o'clock, Selon Arena. Burial at Reedley Cemetery. We'll have sixteen staff in attendance, uh including sworn professional staff and volunteers. That completes my report. Happy to answer your questions.
Questions from council? I just have one question. Um, chief, you said that, uh, excuse me, you uh submitted a grant with Townsend for um body cams?
Yeah, they've been really helpful.
Good. Did they give you a timeline on, you know, when that might take place or, you know, hopefully get granted?
Uh, I don't believe so. No, you know, I'll ask. So that's a that's a good question. Honestly, with grants, I just send it off and whenever, whatever government, state or federal agency is dealing with it, I just figure it's gonna be some time. Uh, but that's a good question. I'm kind of I know, I banged my head against that wall many times, so I I stopped asking, but I will certainly ask it.
Townsend might know, yeah.
Yeah. There there's probably some general timeline.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, it was a great turnout, uh Bella and Starbucks, both of them. And I know that like the ending time, there were still long lines at both. So thank you, the both departments for all of your support of Salma and the the family.
I I appreciate that, but it and and again, you know, can't emphasize enough the the support we get from the community and how they stepped up for this. That's huge to us. Thank you for your kind words.
Okay, thank you, chief, and uh, thank you, Officer Pendley.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to council reports and commu- and staff communications. Seven point one, community service commission. Haven't met, okay, thank you. Seven two, public safety committee. We met yesterday and uh we had a discussion about the funds we have, where to allocate them, and we're gonna continue that uh depending on what happens with the grant with Townsend and uh the body cams. And I talked to chief. They're also hoping, you know, getting it get enough for body cams for the officers and a few uh dash cams, so. Uh, we also spoke about we would like to have a um education and awareness of fentanyl for parents, for adults here in Kingsburg. Um, so we're looking for a venue. We're gonna contact the high school because uh there's an officer Dean, I've been also contacted Officer Dean Cardinelli from the Fresno P D. And he partners with Lisa Smith Camp on education and awareness for fentanyl poisoning. So we're looking to do that hopefully in March or April for the adults here in Kingsburg is what the committee wants to do. So I'll keep you updated on that. And uh, that was about all we had yesterday. Seven point three, community uh Chamber of Commerce.
Um, we met on Tuesday and uh if you haven't gone in there, they did a remodel. It looks really good. The next Oh, haven't gone in. Out front. Looks great in there. Um, they had a successful dinner uh which many of us got to attend um at the Herb Night Center. They are planning a mixer on Tuesday. Uh, meet at Kingsburg Media Foundation is the the host for that one. Um, they're starting up workshops for their members every other every other month. And the first one that they're doing is in March and it's called Eggs, Toast and Taxes. And it's gonna be at Katie's Kitchen. And the sponsor for that will be Cottington. And then two months later, they're gonna be doing one on social media marketing. On March third, there's going to be a street eats. Um, tentatively, it's gonna be in the park. And then there was a lot of discussion um surrounding the fireworks that they do on July third and the cost of that and um the chamber's role in that. So I do know that they're probably gonna be meeting um with city staff to discuss a few different things. There was a lot of discussion on that.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Seven point four, economic development.
Yeah, so we met on the um sixth of February and uh it was a good introductory meeting for me. And um we discussed potential parking solutions for the downtown Draper Street um as well as, you know, increasing some um, you know, uh like a pilot program for increasing activity in the downtown corridor for retail shops and businesses. And so um it was a a good introductory meeting for me and um that's uh pretty much all we discussed.
All right, thank you, Dave. Seven point five, finance committee.
We have met. Uh, we went through what was presented today, which was the remodel budget discussion. And the other topic that we had was the forgivable loan program. Um, some potential restructuring that would probably be brought back to council and uh just following up on some of our promised funds. I'm just kinda seeing where we're at with those projects.
Thank you. Seven point six, planning commission. We have not met since our last meeting. Seven seven, South Kings G S A.
Yeah, so we met on the eighth of February and that was uh via teleconference. And we did um board member um seating. So uh we reappointed um Mister uh Kazarian to be the board chair. And so um from that, we went into um the technical report and, you know, basin capacity and um readiness for potential floodwaters that um hopefully will be coming any day now because they you know, CID irrigation district said that, you know, once there becomes another rain event could potentially bring a lot of water, especially if it's a warm storm now that we're entering springtime. So if that occurs, a lot of the snow that we've got this winter, it could come down pretty quickly, which means they'll have plenty of water to fill plenty of basins, which is good for the recharge for all of us. So um, yeah, other than that, um, a good, another good introductory meeting for me since it was my first time um there. And that's uh what I had to report.
Thank you, Dave. Seven point eight, downtown business improvement district.
Um, they met last Tuesday and they talked about the photographer that they have taking pictures of the members', um, establishments and featuring about four pictures per business. Um, they're still working on their website, they talked a lot about the murals downtown and the plans for those and a lengthy discussion on parking situations downtown and how to approach that and some conversation about zoning, which we've talked about here before.
Okay, thank you Laura. Cog, Council Governments.
Uh, we've had one meeting, uh, majority of that meeting was new members, uh, getting introduced and electing a new chair and vice chair. The new chair is Alma Bautron, the mayor of Parleeder and the vice chair is, uh, Mayor Robertson from Salma. Um, other than that, there was a lot of small committee appointments on that meeting, a lot of them stayed the same, but especially the east side of the county is very well represented in the cog right now.
Thank you. Seven point ten Council Member Reports.
I have something, um, I, I know that we're going to add this eventually, but we had our quarterly meeting for, um, Five Cities GPA, so I was just gonna share about that. It was on Monday and it was via Zoom still, we're talking about going back in person. And the big part of the discussion was the website, we worked three years Alex, maybe on the design and like a new name because it's not just Five Cities anymore, there's seven. And so it's called Center Point District, um, you can still, you can look up the website, it hasn't really been, um, the, the grand opening of it has not happened and the media, um, has not been contacted yet. They're still fixing a few things, but Center Point District Fresno E D C, you can see, it looks really nice. Um, if you scroll down, you will see a map of the seven cities, you can click on Kingsburg. Um, it ha- it will eventually highlight local restaurants, you can click, you can get information on them um, to bring people to our city, it highlights the demographics of our city. Um, there's different tabs that haven't been filled out yet, but eventually will, current projects, um, major employers, what the retail market, the overview looks like, city incentives and at the bottom, there's an interest form if you're interested in more information or, or bringing a business to Kingsburg, Kingsburg that you can fill out.
Do you think, uh, would the council be opposed, when we do these quarterly reports, especially this first one, cause there's a lot we haven't reported on? Can we maybe do like a one-minute overview of what these are, cause I think that when I've tried to discuss Five Cities with people, they have no idea what it is. Do you think you'd be comfortable with that?
Sure, and...
It'd be good to kinda showcase, it's a potential resource for people that they may not know about.
And Alex and I can both talk about it, um, we are both the chairs of the board and now we switched off, are you, was yours to Fowler also? So now Fowler is, so we were on it for a full year. So what Five Cities does is they came together and they, like, there's more power in the small cities coming together um, versus like a big city like Fresno or Clovis when it comes to new businesses. So whether that's, uh, retail or industrial and so they work on our behalf when they go to conferences or when people are having interest in the area and they look at the, the opportunities that we might have in Kingsburg. One of the big examples here is T-Mobile, they really helped us a lot and we're pretty instrumental, right Alex? In facilitating that and showing what we have to offer. So they work with and like for us in bringing businesses here to Kingsburg. Do you wanna?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a joint powers authority that, uh, that we have, um, it includes, uh, Fowler, Sanger, Parlier, Kingsburg, Reedley, uh, County of Fresno, um...
Orange Cove.
And Orange Cove, so I think there's seven total, oh, and Salma, so eight total. Um, and, uh, it, it's, uh, also includes a partnership, um, with the Fresno Economic Development Corporation and so again, the thought is, I mean, I think when it was originally, you know, created several years ago was, uh, to create a resource for the smaller communities to come together for the purposes of economic development. It's grown a little bit since then and, and, um, some of the work that's been done on this new district is again, um, to basically market and brand our area, kind of be an entryway, um, to the region and then, you know, from there, the E D C, depending upon who's interested, you know, if there's a, you know, a, um, a new business or, you know, someone that's looking to locate to the Central Valley or to California in general, they can kinda start with Fresno E D C and then, uh, make sure that the cities are staying up to date with what land we have available, what incentives we have available, all those sorts of things and so it's kind of intended to be sort of the, the front door to that, um, that maybe would not, they would not be aware of, you know, Kingsburg, cause of our size, right? They might start at Fresno or Fresno County or something like that, so, so that's the, uh, the general, uh, intent of that. But, um, you know, we also talk about, uh, again, it's, it's mostly, uh, development-related items, but, you know, impact fees, uh, different things like that, we will bring in, um, I, you know, it happened more so before COVID, so we bring in, uh, you know, presenters or, uh, you know, someone to come in and talk about topics that may be pertinent to the individual communities and then, um, so there's an executive committee that consists of the city managers and then there's, you know, a policy board that consists of, you know, one of the liaison or an appointed person from each of the, each of the respective councils, which, um, Councilmember North is on for us, so.
We, we meet next in May?
Yes, it's usually quarterly and we are, we're, at least the executive community group is working to get back to in-person, so.
Okay, thank you Laura, and Alex. Any more, um, council member reports?
Report out on, uh, we went... Four of us and the city manager went out of town for a Cal League of Cities, uh, training session, which is for new council members, also for those of us that have been on before, it's a good refresher. Um, a lot of it is regarding how we do policies, what our roles are, what the rules are for us as elected officials. Uh, it's, overall, it's a really good training, um, like, should probably go about every two years, just cause things change so much, but, uh, overall, it was a great training, but I think four of us, four of us attended that and the city manager, so.
Yeah, um, I had a good time there myself, you know, uh, and it was exactly a good refresher on things and like you said, there was a few new regulations and laws here, you know, in here in California. And, uh, the only thing I have is, doesn't pertain to city council, but it pertains to Kingsburg. Um, I coached wrestling at the high school and this past weekend, Friday and Saturday, we have five new Valley Champion wrestlers here in Kingsburg, uh, four boys and a girl. Uh, so, I'm gonna name them, uh, Carlos Magoza, is a Valley Champion, Leo Macias, Alec Van Bever, Trace Jackson and the girl Josten Benitez. So we're gonna be in Buchanan this, next weekend, um, trying to qualify for the state tournament. The top ten in masters, there's, it's a thirty-two man bracket and the top ten make it to state next weekend, so that'll be in, uh, Bakersfield.
Okay, congratulations.
Yeah.
If I could, um, piggyback on that Vince, congratulations and I, I know the, the Kingsburg, there's a lot of, um, teams that have made it to end the playoffs, so I think Kingsburg Ladies Soccer is actually playing tonight, I believe, so.
Ah, that's right.
Yeah, so good luck to all the teams that made it in advanced and hopefully we wish them well to advance even further.
Yeah, you're right.
It's good stuff.
Yep, thank you Dave. Okay, next we have City Managers Report, San Joaquin Valley Air Grant Update.
Uh, yes, just a, a quick update that, uh, uh, we submitted with council's direction, uh, a handful of, uh, grant applications to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District and we were recently informed that we were successful. Um, five of them are for twenty thousand dollars each to help offset the cost of new, uh, police vehicles, so that's, um, uh, great news and then, uh, we also have implemented some new, Adam and his group have been working pretty hard on uh, some new online solutions for our residents with regards to, um, we're, you know, reserving parks and will be used for, um, activities at Crandell, um, um, the trolley rentals, things like that. And so the intent obviously, and we were able to get a grant there as well because, uh, limits people having to come down to city hall to actually sign up, so it's more convenient, they can do them online, so it's just part of our, um, efforts to try and, um, you know, offer more solutions to, um, to our residents and we're, we're continuing to work on those as well for, for business licenses, uh, bu- um, building permits and, uh, sort of our internal, uh, planning workflows as well, so. Just like some good news there, a couple other updates, um, uh, the phase one plans for the fiber optic, uh, project have been submitted, so staff is, uh, reviewing those right now and so we're still on target, uh, to begin, uh, that phase one, um, in March. Uh, uh, they have indicated that, uh, once they get started, they, um, basically this, this speed at which they work will be up to, uh, our, uh, tolerance level with regards to the amount of construction throughout town, so we'll be having a lot of con- conversations with them. Uh, we have weekly calls with them, but just, uh, um, keeping you updated with that. And then, um, a handful of staff and, uh, uh, Councilmember Silva also, uh, we did a tour of Second Chance Animal Shelter, uh, last Friday. Um, so we'll be putting some information out, uh, it was a goo- it was a good tour, uh, got to see their operations, um, you know, they're, I think, in a similar position to a lot of shelters where they always have need for food donations, uh, for volunteer hours and, and even monetary donations, you know, for vaccines, those are kind of their, their three big issues right now. Um, so we're gonna be, uh, putting some of that information out in the carrier and on social media, so hopefully, um, you know, folks are interested in, in assisting with that, they can, they can help there as well. That concludes my report.
Okay, thanks Alex. Next we have future agenda, future agenda items. And we have none, does anybody have anything? No. Okay. Adjourn the regular city council meeting for tonight. So how was that, uh?
He stays off AJ retelling it, I know he was gonna hook up.
Yeah, he called.